We all rise and salute as lightly. He changes additions, corrections to the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we move item fifteen, Hewlett Park, to item two on the agenda. And also, I'd like to ask that the Abbott family, who's present here tonight, be allowed to make a presentation, re-presentation, regarding Hewlett Park and the establishment of the C.B. Abbott Memorial Playground.
You mean item fourteen?
Oh, I'm sorry, in the new schedule, it's fourteen, right. Item two.
Item fourteen's been moved to item two. Call a roll, please. Mayor Bullard?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Tiramigi?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Here.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Here.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
All present, your honor. Resolved that the minutes of the common council meeting held on March seventh and March twenty-fourth, nineteen ninety-five are hereby approved. You want to move that?
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Whereas the Board of Education, Fulton City School District, by resolution dated October eleventh, nineteen ninety-four, did agree to convey the real property known as Hewlett Park to the city of Fulton for no monetary consideration. There's a copy of the resolution as an ex here too. Now therefore be it resolved that the common council, the city of Fulton, does hereby accept the transfer of real property known as Hewlett Park from the Board of Education for no consideration. And be it further resolved that the city attorney is authorized and directed to prepare the necessary documents to effectuate the conveyance. Someone want to move that?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second.
I believe Mr. and Mrs. Wheeler and Mrs. Abbott are here and wanted to discuss this with you.
Hi.
Your, your Mrs. Abbott?
My name is Star Abbott and this is my son, C.V., for those of you that don't know. And I'm here to tell you a little bit about Hewlett Park. I would like to tell you, take a minute, tell you about the background. Okay, is that better? Okay. This is my mom, Molly Wheeler, and my dad, Dick Wheeler. And you're looking at the foundation of Hewlett Park of the playground. What I'd like to do is ta-take a minute and just explain to you how it, how we became this. Back in nineteen eighty-nine, when I had C.V., he was six months old and diagnosed with a terminally ill disease called Bernic-Hoffman's Disease. And at that time, we were devastated, basically. And the playground was just beginning in Hannibal, the wooden playground. I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but they were, they were just starting there. And we wanted to turn, take a negative and turn it into a positive, for the most part. When you're hit with something, there's something, I, I say there's something positive in everything, if you can just find it. And whether it was the playground or not, we'll never know. But we took it upon ourselves to do a playground. Now, at first, people would say, "That will never be done." And you know what? Here it is, six years later, and we have a beautiful playground. And, I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable that we could raise that much money in the city of Fulton. And when we did it, we went out and we played on several playgrounds because we wanted safety. That was our first thing, was safety. We went out, we played in Hannibal, we went out to one in, I think it's Skinny Atlas, there was a wooden one. And that's where, that's where we started. And we started fundraising and then a gentleman approached us and said, "You don't want to do a wooden playground." He said, "There's too many things that can happen. You can get splinters, children can get hurt, the bolts can rust, different things like that." And he said, "I want you to, I want you to take this phone number and call Miracle Playground." And we did. And we met a gentleman named Joe Denzack, who's here tonight. And Joe, if you could just come forward. And he, he is with Miracle. And I would like him to tell you about the warranty and the safety of this equipment because I know that with Hewlett, there's been some question as far as, well, who's going to pay for it if, if something should go wrong? And safety and things like that. And Joe here can tell you a little bit about that.
Thank you, it's nice to be here, I appreciate your time. My name again is Joe Denzack and I represent Miracle Recreation Equipment Company. The company is based out of Monette, Missouri. And I am the manufacturer's rep and I'm based out of Syracuse, New York. Just to give you a little information, the company was founded back in nineteen twenty-seven. We developed a patent on the world and from there, we took up, took off and became part of what we are now, one of the largest and oldest manufacturers of playground equipment in the industry. And I brought some information, I know there was concerns regarding safety issues, warranty. And as a manufacturer rep, Miracle designs their equipment based out two criteria. One is the handbook for pla- public playground safety, which is put out by the Consumer Product Safety Commission. And another one is the American, American Standards for Testive Materials, ASTM, put a handbook regarding public playground safety. And these are two guidelines that manufacturers follow when they design playground equipment. And the reason being is you want to design it to prevent any type of accidents, entrapments, that could possibly endanger a child. So I, that's one thing I wanted to bring out to you regarding our, our, our equipment and the way it's designed. And I brought some information for you so you can take a look at and some of the highlights of our equipment and what we can do for you. One of the, another question was warranty of our product. All our product is galvanized steel, so it won't rust or corrode. We try to use, we use stainless steel hardware and fasteners, so it won't rust or corrode. So there's a lot of things that we do in designing our product, as far as quality, materials, workmanship. And I think warranty was an issue too that was brought up. We have a fifteen-year warranty on our product. We have a six-year warranty on, the fifteen more warranties on the main support structure, the posts. And that's in this brochure, I'll be glad to give you. There's a six-year warranty on the, on the plastic items and everything else is warranted for years. So I think as far as a manufacturer goes, we offer one of the most stringent warranties in the industry as far as our product goes. So there's a lot of things that we're, we do as a manufacturer to provide a quality product. I don't know if you have any questions or anything I can answer at this time. I do have some information regarding our product, the things that we offer. And also information on the Americans with Disabilities Act. EDA has come into the playground industry as well.
Could I, could I ask you, Mr. Denzack, would you be kind enough to share those other two books with us?
Sure, you can look at, this are my only copies.
Could we get photocopies of those?
Well, this one, you have to write to the American, the ASTM, the Americans Society for Testive Materials. There's, there's a copyright infringement on this. But you can write to them, I think thirty dollars, thirty-five dollars. This one, if you'd like to make a copy of this one. Perhaps you can write to the Consumer Product Safety Commission guideline.
Perhaps you could give that information or address to Mr. Rose Brandon, who's here, and he could get those ones.
I'd love to do that.
Thank you.
The wooden playground, that I think is very important. One thing that we found out is, we knew the city of Fulton did not have money. So we said, "With the wooden playgrounds, they need to be coated yearly." That was over a thousand dollars just for coating. And I knew that there wouldn't be any way the city of Fulton could ever come up with that kind of money. So that was another thing that steered us directly away from the wooden playground.
What I'm, what I would like to ask is that I'm willing to put my time and put my effort into helping people do this. I'm here to tell you that this can be done. We can, we can raise the money, we can have the equipment, the safe places for kids to play, and the city needs it. And I'm willing to do this again. You know, I think, I didn't do this myself, you know, we didn't do it. It was the community that did it. It was everybody here, you know, everybody up here. It was, it was a community effort. You know, we couldn't have done it ourselves. And I think that this can be done again. I think if you get the right people, you can get some sparks, and I think anything can be done. And, you know, there's enough people out there. I've talked to a few different people. I've got a gentleman that said he'd be willing to donate the sand if we hit, need sand for sandboxes. The, the lads have been wanting to do something with playgrounds. And there's more people out there. They just need to be brought together and it has to be a community effort. And I'm willing to do that. I think that, you know, it would be a great asset to the city. And it would give our kids a safe place to play. I mean, I didn't do this for my son because my son doesn't go down there and play. I did it for the rest of the kids out there.
You did a great job, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Star.
I know a lot of people think there isn't much money in the city of Fulton, but we raised between sixty to seventy thousand in two years. And anything is possible. And, and you've got to be determined to do it. And I think we've got to start taking a little more pride in the city of Fulton. And it's not the government that's going to do it, it's got to be the local people that have got to do it. And I, I, when Joe brought this idea with us, I think it's wonderful. I really do. I've always believed that welfare and everything else, it, it needs to be a community effort. We've got to get back to the idea of helping each other again, instead of being independent people. And I know, we, we proved to ourselves it is possible. So that's, now we're all the more determined that it can happen in Fulton.
And it'd be a much nicer city. You wouldn't have to worry, kids would have a safe place to play. Thank you.
Does anybody in the council have any other questions?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is to transfer the property from the school, this is a resolution of support to transfer the property from the school district to the city of Fulton.
Mr. Tiramigi, do you have something?
Are you done? I would just comment that C.V. Abbott Park is a wonderful park. The question here is ownership. I don't think C.V. Abbott Park is going to move. It'll always be there and always will be functioning as a park. Again, I say the question is ownership. I do not believe it is a duty of this council, nor of the administration, to be involved with the operation of recreation. A month ago, we had a commission who was, who was attempting to implement a master plan for recreation in the city. And it was their recommendation, under this master plan, not to accept this park for the various reasons that they, that they chose and they detailed to this council. For that, one of the reasons, they were abolished. Now there is no committee in place to advise this council. I will take my knowledge from what the former commission had and they chose not to accept this. Anyone else?
I have a question for our city attorney. How does this affect the pending lawsuit between the three parties to be? The city of Fulton, the school district, and the people that are suing?
Doesn't affect it at all. Obviously, anything that happened before the city owns it is, there's a question whether or not it's its responsibility. All that's been referred to the city's insurance company and the school district's insurance company.
No other discussion?
I'd just like to make a few comments. First of all, hi, C.V., it's good to see you again. And I think in C.V.'s case particularly, when we say it's good to see you again, we certainly, it means certainly a lot more. I want to thank the, the Wheelers for the presentation they made, made tonight. I just also want to thank them personally for the tremendous job they did to create Hewlett Park. It's, it's a park that the whole city is extremely proud of. It's the, the park that gets the most attention. And we're certainly pleased that they came forward two years ago and sacrificed and proved to the city that that kind of effort can be put forth and it can be successful. As far as ownership goes, to begin with, it, when this, the transfer of ownership from the school to the city, when that was made, this was left out of the procedure. So it's just a procedural thing. And I also think that, too, that, you know, when we talk about school property or city property, I think it's, it's our property. As, as taxpayers and as city people, we're the ones that foot the bill for the school and for the city. So there's not an awful lot of difference. I don't think we have, for years, the city has maintained the park. We've done all the work on the park and for all practical purposes, the park was the city's park.
Anyone else? Please call a roll. Alderman Lincoln?
No.
Alderman Tiramigi?
No.
Alderman Weston?
Definitely, yes.
Alderman Cavallaro?
Yes.
Alderman Trowbridge?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Motion's carried, your honor. Whereas the meeting of the council held on July twenty-first, nineteen eighty-seven, a resolution was passed allowing vendors to vendor goods and wares that area known as Bullhead Point, subject to the vendors obtaining the license from the city clerk's office and subject to approval of this council. Where Sharon Martin, Alstead Drive, has applied for vendor's license to sell food items from May first, nineteen ninety-five through April thirtieth, ninety-six, at said Bullhead Point. Therefore be it resolved, this council hereby approves the application for vendor's license by Sharon Martin directs the city clerk to issue said license in accordance with the requirements as specified in Fulton City Code. Who do you want to move that?
I'll move it.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved, City Chamberlain, transfer three thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars from the A nineteen ninety contingent account to the A nineteen ten point four-nine unallocated insurance account to cover the cost of Employee Assistance Program Agreement between the city of Fulton and ASOC effective March first, nineteen ninety-five through February twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-six.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion? And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved the following claims against the city are hereby referred to the city attorney. summons a complaint filed by Mary Jane Burnham against the city of Fulton for injuries alleged to have occurred on June thirteenth, she fell in the municipal building. Ordered to show cause petition filed by Michael G. Talents against A Lee Memorial Hospital, the city of Fulton, Fulton zoning board appeals, and Fulton Planning Commission in regard to a proposed addition to existing physician's office building which is connected to A Lee Memorial Hospital. Notice a claim submitted by Nationwide Mutual Insurance as suburb Gee of Albert and Linda Sederberg for damage to their vehicle, alleged to have occurred on February twelfth due to a motor vehicle accident with a city snowplow on Route Three. Notice a claim submitted by Kimberly Van Horn, as parent and natural guardian of Stephanie Van Horn. Personal injuries sustained by Stephanie Van Horn due to a pedestrian automobile accident alleged to have occurred on January seventh on Route Forty-one, city of Fulton. Notice a claim submitted by Shannon Gorman and by her father and natural guardian Kevin Lynn Gorman for personal injuries sustained by Shannon Gorman due to a pedestrian automobile accident alleged to have occurred on January seventh on Route Forty-one, city of Fulton. Who do you want to move that?
I'll second it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that chapter one eight, one eighty-two of the code of the city of Fulton entitled Plumbing Board Rules and Regulations hereby amended to read as follows. Subsection one eight-two dash three, license fee renewal. Add C, plumbing and HVAC tradesmen over the age of sixty-five are exempt from the annual renewal fee. All other provisions of the code shall remain in force and insurance and bond must be maintained.
I'll move it.
Second.
I have a question. This was in front of the plumbing board?
This was described? Yes, it was. If you're asking questions as to why that was done, it was done out of, out of courtesy more than anything else.
No, I just, we just didn't want to do something that's-
No, 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 we had voted on that, that was in there, it was vote.
Thank you very much. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Notation, at a meeting of the common council held on March seventh, the city clerk was authorized to receive sealed bids in his office. Municipal building located one forty-one South First Street, Fulton, New York, on Route Forty, April fourth, up to four P.M. to be publicly open at four fifteen P.M. in the council chambers for curb replacement, sidewalk ramp on Utica and South Forest Streets. City of Fulton, in accordance with specifications prepared by the city of Fulton Engineering Department. City clerk received the following bids, which were read, which were opened and read aloud. ICR Construction, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. James Ross and Son, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars even. Salt Springs Paving, thirty-five thousand, one hundred dollars even. Carmen Vescho, Inc., fifty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars even. Lee Construction Incorporated, fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars even. Moroz Barber Corporation, sixty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars. These bids were referred to the Fulton Engineering Department for review, recommendation to be returned to council at a future meeting. Whereas the city of Fulton is required by section four dash one oh four oh one, the election law, to designate polling locations in the city of Fulton by May first. Now therefore be resolved that the council does hereby designate the following locations as polling places for all elections for the year nineteen ninety-five in the city of Fulton. Ward one, District one and two, Holy Family School. Ward two, District one and two, War Memorial Building. Ward three, District one, Lanningan School. And District two, Our Savior Lutheran Church. Ward four, District one and two, is a Masonic temple. Ward five, District one, is Topath Towers. District two is Fairgrave. Ward six, one and two, is a new place. It'll be the First Presbyterian Church, thirty-three South Third Street. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carried. The next point is a proclamation, and I'll read it. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, whereas the office of the municipal, municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all other levels, and whereas the municipal clerk's office has pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk's office serves as the information center on functions of local governments and community, whereas the municipal clerk's office continually strives to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state, province, county, and international professional organizations, whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Donald W. Bullard, mayor of the city of Fulton, do recognize the week of May seventh through May thirteen, nineteen ninety-five, as the municipal clerk's week. Resolved that the police department is hereby authorized and directed to conduct a traffic study before and after the Burt Street reconstruction on Route Forty-one, also noted as South Forest Street, between Fay Street and the intersection of Route Forty-one and Route Fifty-seven to include the following. One, traffic count, both north and south on Route Forty-one. Two is a traffic count entering and existing at Harris Street. Three, traffic count entering and existing at Burt Street. Four, traffic count entering and exist, exiting South First Street at the intersection of Route Forty-one.
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved salary proposals submitted by the Fulton Housing Authority, which reflects a two percent increase in salaries from April one, nineteen ninety-five to March thirty-first, nineteen ninety-six. Four percent increase in salaries from April first, nineteen ninety-six, to March thirty-first, nineteen ninety-seven, is hereby approved. You want to offer that?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Resolved that the proposed amendment to chapter seventy of the city code entitled Excavations per the recommendation of the plumbing and HVAC board is hereby approved, as per attached.
I'll move it.
Second.
We've got a lot of trouble with, do you want to talk about this?
Until I was prepared to do this. What this basically does is spells out what the city holds contractors who are going to open these roads responsible for. In the past, you've gotten into situations where either the work was done improperly and then the city was responsible to go back and make the correct- and then the city was responsible to go back and make the corrections, and they therefore had no way of billing the people who did the work improperly. So it basically spells out how it's supposed to be done. If it's not done properly, then the city can take action. Thank you.
Quite detailed.
Yes, sir.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I'll just interject that this should help to prevent the settlement that we've had on some of these excavations of the street.
Resolve that Chapter one sixty-five dash fifty-two, Schedule Eight of the Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance, City of Fulton, New York, entitled Stop Intersections be amended to read as follows. Add a stop sign on Lion Street, direction west, at the intersection of South First Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that City Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to establish a petty cash fund amount of fifty dollars for the building account.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
As a New York State Legislature, by virtue of Chapter twelve of the laws of nineteen ninety-five, is made available retirement incentive program to local governments, whereas this legislation permits such local governments participate in New York State and local employee retirement systems, an opportunity to provide special incentive benefits to the regular retirement plan members with ten or more years of service and who are at least fifty years of age and otherwise eligible to retire. Whereas the common council of City of Fulton, New York, elected to provide the targeted retirement incentive program for the eligible employees of the City of Fulton. Now therefore be resolved the common council of City of Fulton at a public hearing considering concerning this proposed local law entitled a local law providing a retirement incentive program for the eligible employees of the City of Fulton be held in the council chambers of municipal building, seven P.M. on Tuesday, May second, nineteen ninety-five. It further resolve that the city clerk be directed and shall do the appropriate publication and notice of this hearing.
Someone want to move that?
Move it.
I'll second it.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that City Clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for an informational workshop to be held on April eighteenth, nineteen ninety-five in the community room of the municipal building Fulton, New York, from two P.M. to four P.M. and from seven P.M. to nine P.M. relative to the proposed property conservation code which would replace the existing state housing code.
I'll move it.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Resolve that the common council hereby accepts the proposal submitted by Eagle Engineering dated February twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-five, for mechanical engineering services to evaluate the HVAC ventilation systems and problems in the DPW garage, main bay, and shop area, police station firing range, the main fire station at the west side, fire station at a cost not to exceed eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, to be a direct charge to the fourteen forty point four engineering account. Be it further resolved, City Chamberlain is hereby unauthorized directed to transfer eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars from the contingent account to the engineering account to cover the cost.
Someone want to move that?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
I would just note that here again, had the city retained its professional engineer, we would not have to expend this cost.
Strange that you mention that because he said he didn't understand ventilation.
The gentleman is a professional engineer. Strange that-
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carried.
Notation that the appointment by Mayor Bullard of Elwin Eichmann, R.D. three, Box one twenty, Fulton, New York, to the plumbing board to fill the unexpired term of Jody Wells effective immediately and to expire December thirty-first, nineteen ninety-five, is hereby entered into the minutes of this meeting of April fourth as matter of record. As a meeting the common council held on March seventh, the request for a zoning amendment submitted by Jim Aluzi, R.D. five, Fulton, New York, for his property located eight oh six South First Street, from R-two residential to C-two commercial was referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation. Whereas per the minutes of their meeting held on March thirteenth, the planning commission approves the request for a zoning amendment from R-two residential to C-two commercial for the above described property. Now therefore be resolved that the planning commission is hereby directed to hold a public hearing in the common council chambers, Fulton, New York, relative to the proposed request for a zoning amendment submitted by Mr. Aluzi.
Someone want to move it?
Can I ask you a question? I was at that planning commission meeting also, and there were quite a few residents from that area that were there at that meeting, and of course the planning commission voted for the change. Is it necessary to have a public hearing on that? Either the council or the commission has to have a public hearing. I don't think they had a public hearing that night. No, they didn't. If it's one body or the other, it has to be. Need a second?
Second.
Good second.
Yes.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
As a meeting held on January third, the request for a zoning amendment submitted by Michael Gavrosky, eight oh one South First Street, his property located eight oh two South First Street, from R-two residential to C-two commercial was referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation. Whereas the minutes of their meeting held on March thirteenth, the planning commission recommends denying this request for a zoning amendment from R-three residential to C-one commercial for the above described property in order to preserve the residential area. And whereas Mr. Gavrosky should be given the opportunity to have a public hearing regarding his request, now therefore be resolved the planning commission is hereby directed to hold a public hearing in the common council chambers, municipal building Fulton, New York, relative to the proposed request for zoning amendments submitted by Mr. Gavrosky.
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. Carvalho, you were at the commission meeting. Wasn't it the wish of the commission to, for the council to hold a public hearing?
They referred it back to the council for public hearing. I, I originally made the assumption when the council referred it to the planning commission that it would also hold a public hearing. Apparently, we didn't spell that out. So they recommended it back to the council, and I'm in favor of the planning commission holding the public hearing.
That is how the commission stated that? For the commission to hold a public hearing?
They, they didn't state it one way or the other in either of these three cases.
I believe Archie said that the commission, or the council should hold a public hearing in this issue.
Well, I think the determination has to be made by the council, maybe legal advisor would-
Well, I was just asking for your recollection.
I think we have to recommend that the planning commission can send it back with their recommendation, but I believe we have the responsibility to say where the public hear, or who shall hold a public hearing.
I think we need to get procedure down so that, I think at least some of us have felt that the planning commission is the place for the public hearing. They're the people that are making the determination, and that, that particular commission meeting is the proper place for a public hearing on, on the issues they're trying to decide. And then refer it to the council.
Suggested that, that night, because I was kind of taken by surprise that they were not holding the public hearing. Again, based on the assumption when we referred it, I thought we did so with thought in mind that they would carry it through, which would include having a public hearing, but that wasn't stipulated. My reason for that is I believe that the continuity of that planning commission, the experience level, the objectivity, and the non-political nature of that group, I feel strongly that that's where the public hearing should be held.
So you're suggesting we change the site plan or review then?
How do you mean?
Well, it is the option. Is it either or body?
That's correct.
So are we going to change the site plan review? Is that what you-
I still not understanding the question.
You're suggesting that the planning commission should hold all public hearings, correct? Is that what your suggestion is?
In my view, yes.
So therefore we should change the site plan review then?
I'm not sure how that site plan review reads. I'd have to read it again.
You just said either or.
Either or. And also the ordinance and sort of zone changes basically read the same way. That's really what we're talking about, isn't it? Yes. That's either the council or the commission will conduct the public hearing. Then yes, the answer is, the opinion is yes, that's the way I would see it.
Well, I could support it if you want to pursue that. I said I could support it if you want to pursue that.
I am pursuing it, and thank you for your support.
You are pursuing.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
The motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
As a meeting of the council held on March seventh, the request for a zoning amendment submitted by Hyrum Lodge, four sixty-three, um, four sixty-three South First Street, Fourth Street, for a zone change from R-three residential to C-one commercial was referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation. Whereas per the minutes of their meeting held on March thirteenth, the planning commission recommends denying, denying the request for the zoning amendment for the above described property in order to preserve the residential integrity of the property and adjacent properties. Whereas Hyrum Lodge should be given the opportunity to have a public hearing regarding this request. Now therefore, or be it resolved, the planning commission is hereby directed to hold a public hearing in the council chambers relative to proposed request for a zoning amendment submitted by Hyrum Lodge.
I'll move it.
Second.
And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Any other business? Does anyone have any business with this council?
I just have one thing. On the twenty-sixth of March, I sent a memo to the mayor, to the assistant to the mayor, and the common council requesting their input on the possibility of having an informational common council meeting sometime during the, the month. I originally put down that possibly we would have it on the fourth Tuesday of the month, but since then I've learned that, or been made aware of the fact that the school board also has their meetings on that night. So I would change that recommendation to be the third Tuesday of the month. And once again, this is, would be something strictly for the council to consider as to one, number one, do they want to do something like this? I received some positive input back on it and nothing negative as yet, so I would assume that this is something that they feel will be something of value. It would be strictly a informational meeting, there would be no votes taken, the purpose of which would be to better have our communication between the mayor, the assistant to the mayor, the common council, and also the public. We are, at least I'm thinking of having a, possibly a fifteen minutes prior to the informational meeting for input from the public, and once again, it's strictly for the common council's benefit, so therefore, they're, they may address something that you're bringing up, and they may decide to look at it at a later date. So I guess I'm asking the council if that's something they want to do, we would schedule the first one for the third Tuesday, which would be the eighteenth.
I like the sound of that idea. I'd be in favor of it.
I guess it was unclear to me that when you sent that memo, the workshop was to deal with upcoming council issues?
Right. It would deal with anything that happened on this agenda that we needed to further discuss. It would deal with items that are coming up during the month that we need to discuss. We've got some, one of the things we have to discuss is the capital improvements plan as to, as to our priorities. We need to sit down with that, so it's just as strictly an informational value for the council.
I have no objection. In fact, I mentioned this over a year ago, we should have been meeting for workshop sessions.
You are just a, I, I think they're a great idea too, Bob.
You know, and if it, if it seems to work out, fine, then we'll continue to do it. If it doesn't seem to work out, then it's strictly an optional thing, and it's for the purpose, the benefit of the council.
So do I, Bob. Great idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so we'll, and that would, of course, for the press, for the public, it's just an open forum, it'll be very informal.
Right. It's, well, that's a separate, that would be held downstairs.
I didn't realize that, you know, it's very hard not to have some kind of a conflict. They say this is going to be very informal and-
Since we're all together, we're going to have, have to open up a meeting, and I just want it, I want everyone to know that on that third Tuesday, I'm going to be asking each and every third Tuesday that we meet that we do, just to prove the bills that have been audited. Makes it easier for the Chamberlain's office to get the bills out on time. And it's just formality.
I think the gentleman raises a good point. I didn't realize it's the same time as the informational downstairs. I would want to attend the one downstairs. If there's really nothing pressing on the one upstairs.
No, it's fine. That's fine.
Motion to adjourn.
I just had one comment. You're done. It just had to do with the reading of the proclamation. It may have been an oversight on your part, but in the final paragraph, I'll just read it. It mentioned that you extend your appreciation to the municipal clerk Joseph Tietzel and to all municipal clerks for vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And I'd just like to mention that I worked with Joe Tietzel, and I practically grew up with him, we were neighbors. He has been a fine gentleman. He does his work very professionally, and as I examined our budget figures for nineteen ninety-four, his office came in under budget and brought in additional revenues than was anticipated, so he does conduct his office in a professional manner. And I would like to thank Joe for that.
We all thank Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to mention that the new garbage truck is here. In Fulton. Does that make you happy?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Second. And the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.
You have no interest in the state? Thank you.